Good evening. Call to order, the regular meeting of the Board of Education for June 16th, 2021. Will everyone please rise for the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A reading of our mission statement. We are committed to academic achievement and success for all students in a safe environment. In partnership with families and our community, our mission is to promote confidence, inspire a passion for learning, and to prepare our students to become responsible global citizens. May I have a motion to approve the revised agenda?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Before we move on to the accommodations portion of the ceremony, I'd just like to thank the high school again for hosting us in order for us to be able to have all of you in the venue. So, thank you so much to the high school staff, especially the custodial audio visual room. We're also very thankful that this evening, we have down in the front, the class of 2021 Monroe Woodbury sign that was made. I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Tauber, so she can kind of explain a little bit about the sign.
Yeah, so last year, one of the senior parents created a sign that had all the seniors' last names. So, we thought it was such a great idea that the all-night grad party wanted to do something as well this year. So, we did something with all the seniors' pictures, and I do want to give a special thanks to John Nowicki, the technology chair here, and to Liz Pash for putting all these on the board for us. So, the vision was there, and then they executed it for us. And I also know that Claire Duffy helped as well, one of the parents. So, thank you, and please feel free to take pictures after the board meeting.
Yes, thank you. It's beautiful. Just a few housekeeping notes. Dr. Koeifman is running a little bit late, and unfortunately, Mr. Cirella was unable to make it with us this evening, so he is not here. And I do believe, Emily, yes, Emily's here. I'm sorry, I couldn't see her down there. Okay, so to start us off this evening, we're going to start with commendations for Special Olympics. And our presenters this evening for that will be Randy Connolly, Christine Miranda, Karen Escobar, Faith Hippsman, and we have a special guest, Matthew Stenson. And assisting with the presentations, we have Suzanne Donahue and Dawn Tauber.
Thank you so much for allowing me a few moments to speak to you tonight. I've been asking the question quite often lately, why Monroe Woodbury? Recently, in response to that question, I had someone turn the question around and ask me why Monroe Woodbury. And I started thinking, really thinking, what is it about Monroe Woodbury that brought me here, kept me here, and that I love so much? The students, of course, our colors for sure, the music, the sports. And then I realized, it's really because of the people, my Monroe Woodbury family. People like Dana, who have taught and guided and mentored, who go above and beyond, who give so much to their students and their colleagues. Dana is an amazing teacher, a phenomenal coach, and a truly wonderful friend. She is, sorry, Monroe Woodbury. She has left her mark here for the past 20 years. She has guided her students and their families. She has taken us all under her wing, and we are forever grateful. Dana never worked eight to three. Her impact was felt well outside the walls of our building and off of our fields. Even teaching my own girls how to swim. She loves what she does. It's never a job for her. Dana has coached our Special Olympics team for 12 seasons. Our time at West Point has been seamless because of the hours that she puts in. Our first Special Olympics at home was just as seamless and so special. We are so proud to wear our purple. Dana believes she challenges, she guides. Her enthusiasm is contagious. Her shoe's too big to fill. As she closes the door on a career filled with magic and moments, tradition and pride, she will step into an even more important role as full-time Nana. They are lucky to have you. We will miss you. Thank you for the beginning, the end, and every amazing moment in between. We are forever grateful and will continue to make you proud. So, why Monroe Woodbury? Because of you, Dana. We couldn't let this moment pass without a small token of our appreciation, delivered to you by one of your first athletes from your first team. Please welcome Matthew Stenson.
Thank you. I believe Ms. Karen Escobar will be presenting the awards for the Special Olympics.
Good evening, Board of Education, Mrs. Rodriguez and Administration. On behalf of all the elementary coaches, I would like to congratulate our 15 athletes on displaying excellent sportsmanship, dedication, and perseverance throughout the season. They attended three practices where they worked on improving their skill level at the long jump, running, shot put, and javelin throw. They competed last Saturday in those four track and field events. Overall, as a team, they earned 15 gold medals, 15 silver medals, and 15 bronze medals. We are so very proud of these fabulous athletes. Coach DiCerchio, Coach Myers, Coach Styler, and I are honored to be their coaches. So, without further ado, I would like to announce the names of the 15 extraordinary elementary Special Olympians that competed in the Monroe Woodbury Special Olympics this 2020 to 2021 school year. Alex Lopez. Jonathan Martinez. Jonathan. Isabella Pellington. Brianna Torado. Isabella Zimberi. And we have five athletes here tonight, but I would like to recognize the other 10 that are not here that did compete. Yedmi Corona. Emerson Escobar. Brandon Ferro. Gavin Hopkins. Chris Jackson. Dylan Mendez. Liam Morales. Chris Linton. Connie Singh. And Natalie Vista. Great job, athletes. Thank you to everyone that played a role in making this event happen this year. It was a wonderful day. A huge shout-out to all of the athletes' families for your support during our season. Let's hear it one more time for the Monroe Woodbury Elementary Special Olympics.
Congratulations. Up next is our presenter from the middle school for Special Olympics, Christine Miranda.
Good evening. I would like to take this moment to thank Elsie Rodriguez, the Board of Education, and our administration for their support in allowing us to have an event for our athletes to compete this year. Special Olympics is always such an incredible experience, and this year was no exception. Our students competed and won 80 medals this year. Having the opportunity to bring our athletes home to compete on our own fields was very, very special. I would also like to thank those that without their help, this event would not have been possible. Randy Connolly, Jeanette Santander, Stephanie Van Etten, Moira Banano, Sue Smith, Stephanie Haley, Rebecca Gutierrez, Anne Marie Forlini, Diana Senera Butler, Edris Castro, Rafaela Marcano, Jen Figuera, Mallory Greenberg, Mary Ann Sternkoff, and there are so many more people that have helped us, and they helped that day. It has been an honor and an absolute privilege to coach alongside Dana Shackman. We both are so proud of our athletes, and it has been my privilege to be their coach this year. Dana, I cannot thank you enough for all that you have done to help me and in making this happen. Now, for the best part, I would like to introduce our Olympians up to the stage. Athletes, when I call your name, please come up. Tyler Adams. Jaden Crawley. Dani D'Atillo could not be here tonight. Christiana DePaulis. Come on up, Christiana. Ava Janishi could not be here tonight. Yvonne Masillan. Is Yvonne here? Liam McMullin. Christopher Mitchell could not be here tonight. Nicholas Matrone. Leo Montez Lopez. Griffin Patzner could not be here tonight. Selah Villanueva. Our 1/8 grader, we are so proud of, who will be going to the high school, Logan Whitfield. And last, but definitely not least, Olivia Zipetta. Congratulations, congratulations. We're proud of all of you.
Congratulations. I love that they all wore their medals tonight to show off. That's a great accomplishment. Up next for the high school, we have Faith Hippsman.
This evening, we are here to recognize our Special Olympic athletes' achievements at our awesome track and field competition that took place June 12th at the high school. Your athlete has been working hard practicing each event that they participated in. We were all so proud of their effort and their sportsmanship and their heart throughout the entire competition. I usually hold 18 to 20 practices to prepare, but for this competition, we only had two Saturday practices, and thanks to Coach Tierney, we were able to practice some events during his gym class, which I'm so grateful for. I must thank my team of assistants, Heidi Anger, Colleen Grimes, Antonia Felice, Francesca Marcano, Corinne King, Sharon Lipsky, Tara Stenson, and Erica Larysey, and Lorraine Marciano. Our athletes received the following medals: 15 gold, 20 silver, and 28 bronze. Now, I will introduce our high school athletes. Chris Adorno. Alexa Alvarado. Max Bexarty. Some of my athletes couldn't make it, but I'm going to announce their names. Aaron Cohen. Jordan Cooper. Adam Dominguez. Angel Dominguez. Barah Hamid. Our Special Olympic captain, Joseph Hetty. Matthew Hopkins. Teddy Ayalordi. Teddy? Teddy Ayalordi? Maury Jabor. Christian Medina. And I'm going to lose Shannon Mesasama. She's a senior, and she's graduating. Onto bigger and better things. Dominique Wolfe. Last but not least, Stephanie Wolfe. Oh, my goodness. Evan, how could I forget Evan? So sorry about that.
Congratulations. I'd like to give a special congratulations to Shannon, as Ms. Hogg so well put it yesterday to some of our athletes, "Once a Crusader, always a Crusader." Congratulations, Shannon. Up next to present for Odyssey of the Mind is Deborah Garland. And assisting her is John Beeler and Dr. Sergey Koeifman, board trustees.
Hi, everyone. Odyssey of the Mind is an international creative problem-solving program that engages students in learning by allowing them to come to life with their creativity and produce brand-new ideas that have never been seen before. Participants build self-confidence, develop life skills, create new friendships, and they're able to recognize and explore their true creative potential. I'm thrilled to say that Monroe Woodbury has been participating in Odyssey of the Mind for over four decades now. And that's right? That's pretty amazing. And I would like to thank the board for their continued support of our Creative Crusaders. Thank you for that. I'm thrilled to be here to let you know that this year was, for all of us, rough, but it was particularly interesting for our Omers, because they had to do everything virtually due to the COVID protocols. They basically got together as a team, well, not together, but they got together as a team, and they put together an eight-minute skit involving technical elements and costumes and props and sets, and they were never in the same room together the entire season. So, that's pretty amazing. I'm proud of you. It was definitely a unique problem-solving situation for coaches. This past April, four of the school's teams competed virtually, and they placed best in the state and qualified to participate in the 42nd Annual Odyssey of the Mind World Finals Competition. Let's begin this evening with Central Valley Elementary. And please hold your applause till all the Omers are up here, and then we'll give them one big round. I don't want anybody's name not to be heard. Okay, Team Phillips placed first at both the regional and state competition. Please welcome Coach Lauren Phillips and her Omers, Nathan Chan, Samuel Chan, Logan Gold, Howan No, Mia Perna, Lizzie Fenfert, and Ava Sethna. Congratulations. Well done, Coach. It's so exciting to see them. I haven't seen them all year, not even at tryouts. That was all online as well. We have some kids who were not able to make it this evening, but we'll make sure they get their certificates. Well done, Central Valley. Next up, Pine Tree Elementary Creative Crusaders, were coached by the dynamic duo of Jess Pieron and Lauren Mandarino. This team placed second at both the regionals and state competition. Please welcome Michael Alapat, Andrew Dambrosso, Carter Greenberg, Melanie Coeva, Nathaniel Mitchell, Aiden Pamplina, and Cameron Stein. While we're waiting, I see a Monroe Woodbury alum and Odyssey alum. Welcome back, Emma. Good to see you. Two middle school teams also participated in all three levels of the virtual competition. One of our most successful coaches ever, veteran coach Joanne McInerney, was amazing this year in such a, she helped all the other coaches in a way with the technology. So, thank you so much for that, Coach. And her team is... And her team is Dylan Escobar, Kyle Imhoff, Nizma Melik, Dylan McCann, Mia McHugh, Ava Mueller, and Lauren Mueller. Well done, Coach Mac. Our final Odyssey team to come up this evening was coached by Lisa Ayacarino, and they impressed the Odyssey world with her team's creative problem-solving. Please welcome Madison Burnsley, Gillian Kalub, Elena Mota, Nicole Otavio, Gabriel Patzner, and Andy Reese. All being represented by Nicole Otavio, who could play all seven roles at once. Congratulations, team.
Thank you to Mrs. Garland and all the coaches, and congratulations to all of the students. Our next presentation for this evening are the NISMA results that will be presented by Mr. Christopher Toborski and assisted by Anthony and Emily, our board representatives this evening.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Christopher Toborski. I'm the district music coordinator. Thank you to the Board of Education and to Mrs. Rodriguez and the rest of the cabinet for inviting me to tonight's very special meeting and for helping me to recognize many of our outstanding students on their achievements at the NISMA festivals this year. The NISMA Solo Festival, or New York State School Music Association Solo Festival, is perhaps the most important event for the individual musician. Students spend months preparing a solo as well as mastering a series of scales, rudiments, and arpeggios. NISMA solos range in difficulty from Level 1 or elementary to Level 6 Professional. I am thrilled to announce the Monroe Woodbury students who performed on a Level 6 and scored an A+ or 97 points out of 100 or higher. Please help me welcome to the stage Rebecca Avla. Nina Bisconti. Jordan Cooper. Kathleen Coyle. James Dawson. Nicholas DeFranza. John English. Leanne Fernandez. Matthew Graves. And here comes Jordan Cooper. Welcome to the stage, Jordan. Ethan Holla. Max Herschkowitz. This next person scored twice a Level 6 A+ on both voice and trumpet, Kalissa Inzendorf. Kristin Jepastol. Michaela Kim. Angun Lee. This next student not only scored a Level 6 A+, but got a perfect 100 on both an oboe and flute solo. Please welcome to the stage Amara Lightner. Alexis Leoni. Alex Liu. Vivian Lone. Emma Malabanen. Anastasia Mamkin. Dia Mangat. James Nickel. Andrew Pelson. Stephanie Peng. Matthew Q. Jordan Subox. Yoo Min Sung. And I know she can't be here tonight, but Olivia Theokis. All of these students performed a Level 6 Professional, Level 6, scored an A+. Give them another round of applause. While these photos are being taken, I want to mention one more thing. Finally, Monroe Woodbury community has been recognized by the NAMM Foundation for its outstanding support of music education, receiving for the 10th year in a row a Best Community for Music Education recognition. Congratulations to the entire community.
Past 10 years.
Oh, that's so awesome.
Thank you.
That's so great.
Congratulations, thank you.
Elsie, you need to go take a picture with it. Oh, God.
You should take a picture.
Yeah.
Hey, Chris?
Take it with him.
Take a picture. Come on. Let's take a picture. This is your achievement, not mine. Just send you the children.
Congratulations. Up next to present the Seal of Bilinguality is Dr. Hassler, and he will be assisted by Dan Ezroti and Jamelle Evans.
Thank you and good evening, everyone. The New York State Seal of Bilinguality recognizes high school graduates who have attained a high level of proficiency in listening, speaking, reading, and writing in one or more languages in addition to English. The New York State Seal of Bilinguality acknowledges the importance of being bilingual in today's global society. It highlights the hard work and achievement of students and encourages students to pursue language study when in school. The recognition of attaining bilinguality becomes part of the high school transcript as well as their diploma for these students, and is a statement of accomplishment for future employers as well as college admission. This year, we're fortunate to have 34 students who achieved the Seal of Bilinguality in one world language and three graduates who achieved the Seal in two world languages. The languages that they demonstrated proficiency in beyond English were Spanish, French, and Italian, which are currently offered in the high school, as well as Greek and Russian. Each student will receive a certificate as well as a medallion that is presented from the New York State Education Department that they will be able to wear at graduation next week. And we would like to congratulate the following students. Leanne Acosta-Palmers. Joshua Kaplan. Kristin Carroll. Megan Cathcart Wood. John Dolan. Colin Duffy. Emily Ezroti. Sean Gomito. Samantha Gargulo. Ethan Gallinger. Robert Graziano. Vanessa Goraka. Imanal Hernandez. Nazari Hernandez. Megan Jeszek. Emily Gibb. Cristel Jimenez Delalo. Wendy Lucero. Angel Martinez. Katherine Mednick. Sarah Mednick. Ariana Michelena. Carly Newman. Miriam Oki. Margaret Petrich. Christopher Pazella. Maeve Ryan. Chloe Saldana. Teresa Scotto. Jay Sethi. Eric Shippey. Jaden Talber. Evelyn Torres. Madison Vasallo. And the next three students completed the Seal of Bilinguality in two world languages. Eletheria Kamausis. Sevinch Hassan Masarova. And Sofia Morales. How about one more round of applause for this? How about one more round of applause for this?
Congratulations to all of our students. Up next to present for the High School Valedictorian and High School Saludatorium is the principal,
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present these two very unique and special young ladies. But before I present them, I just want to say all our students have been working hard and doing what they can during this pandemic, but these two truly exemplify the hard work. I would like to call to the stage Ms. Carly Newman, our valedictorian, who currently has whose average for weighted average is a 101.1642. Carly is the vice president of the National Honor Society, a member of the Spanish Honor Society, a tri-annual music honor society. She is an active participant in the lead mentoring club, girls varsity golf team, the math team, interact and stars. She's a cellist in the MWHS Chamber Orchestra and has volunteered as a music mentor at a local elementary school. She has participated in NISMA, All County, and area all-state festivals. During her senior year, she was a tutor for the essential prep, a student-led and taught SAT prep course. Outside of school, Carly is a dancer at the Terpsichore Dancer School, where she is a member of the senior company and demonstrator for younger students. She is a girl scout and a volunteer for the Monroe Ambulance Corps. Carly will be attending Binghamton University this fall and majoring in biological science on a pre-med track and plans on participating in the first-year research immersion program. Ladies and gentlemen, Carly Newman. And left off of this is the Seal of Bilinguality as well. It's my pleasure to introduce the salutatorian with a 100.8059 GPA, Megan Cathcart Wood. Megan is a member of the National Honor Society, the Spanish Honor Society, varsity swim and dive team, varsity golf team, interact, stars, and lead. She's currently the treasurer of the Spanish Honor Society and was named captain of the varsity swim and dive team. She's heavily involved with her school diving team, our school diving team, which allowing her to medal at the NYSPHSA championships and also hold the school record in that sport. Outside of school, Megan volunteers at St. Patrick's Parish as an altar server during the weekly masses and is a summer counselor for the Vacation Bible School Program. In the fall of 2021, Megan plans on attending Bucknell University, where she will continue her diving career as a member of the women's swimming and diving program. She is currently undecided in her major, but hopes to pursue a career in health sciences.
Thank you to the Board of Education and the Cabinet. I have a really easy job tonight.
Ladies and gentlemen, Megan Cathcart.
I'm just introducing Jenna and Alexandra, who are from the Yearbook Club. They're passing out the yearbooks for this year, as well as the advisors for the Yearbook Club, Mrs. Koch and Mrs. Roman.
Also a Seal of Bilinguality recipient.
Thank you, Mr. Casti, and congratulations to Megan and Carly.
I'm Danielle Roman, one of the advisors.
Up next, we have a presentation of the middle school yearbook to the Board of Education
So when Mrs. Kirinen and I began working on the yearbook, we had no idea that we would
by the middle school principal, Mr. Misano.
ever have the opportunity to include four pages that showcase students working at home with their pets. Being that we are animal lovers, dogs in particular, we would be remiss if we didn't include some of our best sidekicks from this past year. This year has obviously been very different, but we were able to capture the best moments nonetheless. We utilized the students in the club to pass along messages and, for the first time, actually create pages. We used Google Classroom to make announcements and hold meets, and we used email to send out hundreds of requests for pictures. It was a massive group effort, and we want to thank all of the administrators, the teachers, staff, students, and parents who helped us make the 2021 yearbook a success. Here to present the 2021 Middle School Yearbook are Jenna Alfano and our club treasurer, Alexandra Ziola.
Hello, my name is Jenna Alfano. I am the eighth, I'm an eighth grader in the Yearbook Club. The theme for the 2020-2021 yearbook is Growing Together. If you open the book and take a look at the wraparound cover, you will see a tree that is transforming throughout the seasons. We have definitely spent this past year growing together as we navigated through the twists and turns of the school year. This year, as a club, we spent a lot of time learning about the eDesign website. I created pages 16 and 17, which are created, which are titled "Snow Day." Remember that day in December when we had our first big snowfall? Well, we had many students sending pictures of them playing in the snow, so we decided to include it in the yearbook. This is just one of the fun memories we included in this year's book.
Hello. My name is Alexandra Ziola, and I am an eighth grader in the Yearbook Club, as well as a treasurer. Aside from being the treasurer, I took on many other roles in this year's club. The yearbook has 136 pages, and we collected hundreds of images from 10 school events through our online picture portal. We also sold nearly 580 books this year. It was an extremely challenging year for the Yearbook Club, but with the help of technology and the hard work of all of the members, we were able to connect with each other, plan pages, and communicate effectively to produce a book that we are very proud to present this year. We hope that you all enjoy looking through a yearbook from a very unforgettable year.
Thank you so much. We will take a brief five-minute recess before continuing with the meeting. Good evening. We are back after a brief recess, and there was no board business that took place. We're going to move on with our agenda in recognition of our athletic achievements by Director of Athletics, Ms. Lori Hock.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight about some of our athletic achievements from this past year. Although this was not a typical year, we still had a lot to celebrate. With many championships being canceled, our focus was on participation for a good portion of the year. When things were finally up and running, we were fortunate enough to achieve the following. In the winter season, both our boys bowling team and our girls bowling team won the Section IX Regional Tournament Championship. During the fall season, our defining moment was when our boys soccer team captured the Section IX Championship on our home turf. And if any of you were fortunate enough to be there, it was truly a magical night. During the spring season, we started to have championship opportunities again, and our accolades included divisional championships for baseball, girls golf, boys lacrosse, softball, and girls track and field. We also won several Section IX championships, one in boys lacrosse, again on our home turf. Our softball team won their Section IX championship, remained undefeated for the entire season, and finished ranked number one in New York State. Our girls track and field team had their eighth back-to-back-to-back-to-back, or however many it is, Section IX championship. Truly a dynasty. Other notable achievements that I'd like to talk, talk about within the athletic department include, our athletic department received Orange County's Community Service, or excuse me, Community Service Challenge Award. This is awarded to a program within Orange County that conducts the most community service out of any athletic department. This was one of our goals when they came out with this challenge. This was one of our goals, to come together as an athletic department, as a community. And our kids and our coaches came through last year and this year, and we have back-to-back Community Service Challenge Awards. The award itself is not the most important thing. What our students have gotten out of it is the most important thing, and it's been very cool to see some of the ideas that they've come up with. Some of the ideas were sending cards and letters to first responders, shoveling out neighbors during that big snowstorm that we were talking about earlier. And there were some programs that we conducted that involved young students in the community just learning a sport, learning about character, learning about leadership, and all the qualities that come with being an athlete. In addition to our Community Service Challenge Award, New York State Public High School Athletics each year gives out a, an award called the School of Distinction Award. In receiving this award, 100% of your varsity teams have to qualify as scholar athlete teams. And I'm so proud to say that 100% of our teams did this again this year. Speaking of scholar athletes, Monroe Woodbury students, Daniel Liu, and a name you've heard many times tonight, Megan Cathcart Wood, earned the prestigious honor of being named Monroe Woodbury Senior Scholar-Athlete Award winners by the Orange County Interschoolastic Athletic Association. On another note, and pertinent to athletics, when we saw, when we had the new fields installed, one of our goals was to host postseason events. I'm happy to report that this year, we were able to host sectional games and championships in football, girls soccer, boys soccer, baseball, softball, and lacrosse. We also hosted a Section IX regional event for track and field. We are getting great use from our fields, and we are now recognized as the top facility in our area. To sum things up, it's been a challenging year, but it's been a rewarding year. Our goal was to give our students a meaningful opportunity to participate and compete. On behalf of all of our coaches and our athletes, I want to sincerely thank each and every one of you for your support in making that happen this year.
Thank you, Lori, and congratulations to all of our athletes. I don't believe we have any questions or comments. And I also do not believe that we have any update from anything, correct? Okay. So moving on, we have the approval of our district goals for the 2021-2022 school year. Mrs. Rodriguez is going to present with members of the cabinet.
Thank you. Good evening. Every year, the school district creates goals for their school, and this year is no different. This year, we worked with a small group of board members, along with cabinet members, to develop three distinct goals for the coming school year. The first goal is using data and organizational processes, identify opportunities to improve student outcomes. The first was to select a central repository, because many of our datas are in different programs. So the first thing we're going to be doing is research a central data repository during the month of June and July, if the board so accepts this, these goals. The second thing is recommend a central repository to the Board of Education next month. Our, our hope is that the board will approve our recommendations, and only, the only time we're going to look for the board to approve recommendations is if there's a financial implication to anything that we're requesting. And the last for 1.1 is install installation of the approved central repository. 1.2 is collect the data and analyze. We want to develop a district-wide data team, provide training for our data teams, analyze the data, preliminary reports on findings and recommendations, and hopefully the board, again, if there's a, if there's a recommendation, approve any expenditures. And last, provide updates to the Board of Education. 1.3 speaks about create organizational processes. Research a central organizational process repository. Recommend a central organizational repository to the Board of Education. Board approves our recommendations, installation of approved central organizational repositories, create and collect district-wide processes, preliminary reports to the Board of Education, and finally, if we have any recommendations, again, we will be coming to the board and asking for their approval. 1.4 is operational and curriculum impact. Based on the data and analysis and organizational process, identify an area for improvement. Create an improvement plan or organizational changes. Again, we'll, we'll come back to the board to approve that plan, implement approved changes, and monitor changes for effectiveness. 1.5 reads continuous process of improvement. Again, this is always with the goal of improving student outcomes. For our second goal, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Kravitz, who will speak a little bit about family and community engagement.
Thank you very much. So our second goal came to life from our district's strategic plan, which back in 2017 was something that the board had, had approved. We had begun work with the help of PLC associate, associates and create and crafted that. Back in 2018, in February of 2018, we conducted a survey to over 6,000 people, which included students, staff, parents, and community members. We looked at those results, we, we reviewed them, and then we determined what we wanted our objectives to be based on those. So the three areas, or the three, the three, I guess bullets that we're going to be looking at, are going to be focusing on, all will be focusing on engaging our families. One, in conversations around student needs and progresses. Our school has programs for families so we can help our children at home. As a parent, family member, I feel connected to our school. Those are three, three areas that jumped out at all of us back in 2018 in terms of areas that we felt that we could improve. You'll see that with the goal, the goal is increase certain numbers or percentages by 2%. And the reason for that is when we crafted our, our goals in, back in 2018 as a result of the strategic plan, we had a five-year plan, and we figured by 2023, we would be able to hit a certain number of benchmarks. So the 2% is representative of after 2018. We did our survey again last, last year in 2020. So it's indicative of progress that we're making towards our overall, our overall 2023 goal. In February 2020, when we, we surveyed everybody again, our goal was to come back in March, compare data, formulate a plan, and then obviously our, our pandemic happened. So we're back at it this year, and we'll be conducting our survey moving forward. So from a timeline standpoint, our administrators, some of whom are in the audience, this summer we will unveil all of our goals and work together with them during our summer retreat. We'll move from there to November, December, where we'll work as a school district to let everyone know that our, the survey is coming. One, in conversations around student needs and progresses. Our school has programs for families so we can help our children at home. As a parent, family member, I feel connected to our school. Those are three areas that jumped out at all of us back in 2018 in terms of areas that we felt that we could improve. You'll see that with the goal. The goal is increase certain numbers or percentages by 2%. And the reason for that is when we crafted our goals back in 2018 as a result of the strategic plan, we had a five-year plan, and we figured by 2023, we would be able to hit a certain number of benchmarks. So the 2% is representative of after 2018. We did our survey again last year in 2020. So it's indicative of progress that we're making towards our overall 2023 goal. In February 2020, when we surveyed everybody again, our goal was to come back in March, compare data, formulate a plan, and then obviously, our pandemic happened. So we're back at it this year, and we'll be conducting our survey moving forward. So from a timeline standpoint, our administrators, some of whom are in the audience, this summer, we will unveil all of our goals and work together with them during our summer retreat. We'll move from there to November, December, where we'll work as a school district to let everyone know that our, the survey is coming, the survey is coming, and we get to once again conduct that survey. That will be done in January. By February, we'll compile the data and analyze it. And by April and May of next year, we'll be identifying plans and developing them. And then by May of next year, we'll be sharing that with the general public. So the goal, these three bullets were based on, you know, the idea that we have a really great community, and we're incredibly fortunate to have such an active, engaged community, but there are always areas for improvement, and that's what we decided to focus on. And then there's goal number three.
Thank you, Mr. Kravitz.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I'm going to turn over to goal number three, and Mr. Cahill will speak a little bit about goal number three.
Right, thank you. So goal three has really three components. And I would say the first component that deals with capital project planning is the most substantive piece of this goal. And forgive me, I'm going to read some of the actual goals. So goal three concerns capital project planning, as I said, with the overarching task next year of presenting a proposition to the community, to the voters of the community on May 15th, for them to approve future capital project work. So capital projects with school districts require voter approval. And in our case, we would be using a combination of building aid, capital reserve contribution, so that's like, it's analogous to buying a home and you're putting a certain amount of money down, and the retirement of existing debt to have little or no impact on our budget, the tax levy, or the taxpayer of the community. So that's one of our criteria, our conditions as well. So we've talked a lot about the deferred maintenance, capital maintenance that has occurred over, say, the last 10 or 12 years in our buildings. And I think we all agree, we've gotten to the point where it doesn't make sense, it's not a good practice to repair, we really need to replace certain building components. So as you can see, the goal here says manage, coordinate, and carry out pre-refund, so this is the goal for next year, capital project planning for a capital project authorization date of May 15th. So that would be the same day as the statewide budget vote date, I believe. Donna's shaking her head no. Okay. So it's within two or three days of that. Okay. So this project authorization would provide for funding and voter approval necessary to begin a multi-year, multi-phase capital project initiative, which would touch on every building in the district, really. So every school building would be affected, there'd be work in every building. The education center, the transportation, bus garage would be impacted. I mean, every facility in our district needs some form of work, and this would be a fairly big authorization to take care of that. But again, the overarching goal of that would be no impact to the local taxpayer. So that's really a huge undertaking. The real work would start, I see, multi-phase, because this kind of project would take three, four, five years to really take care of everything. We're pushing for a May date, because there's a lot of components which are nearing or past their useful life. For instance, the boilers in the district, there's several schools in the boilers, we're spending a lot of money to repair those, and we really need to replace them. So there was some discussion, should it be in May, should it be its own standalone proposition? We felt like doing it sooner rather than later is the best approach, and what we really need to do at this time. So the next component of goal three has to do with developing a reserve and fund balance plan. So in consultation with the audit committee and school board, we're going to create and update the multi-year fund balance and reserve plan, providing target reserve balances and tracking reserve usage. So this is something that we have, but we haven't updated it in a few years. And with the audit committee, with the board, we would establish, how much should we have in any given reserve? Should it be a year of expenses? Should it be three years? There's different philosophies about that. If there's a lot of variation in the expense, would we have more? So that generally is kind of a wise thing to do. So that's sort of the update of the reserve plan. And finally, component three of goal three would be to develop a long-range financial planning instrument or model. So over the last few years, we've sort of done our long-range planning in a few different ways, and I think what we want to do is agree upon the best practice and the best approach. Is it a piece of software? Is it, I mean, we've done it in Excel, you know, kind of a very complex Excel workbook. What instrument? And that's why I use the term instrument or model, would we use for that long-range forecasting? So that's goal three in a nutshell, three components.
Thank you, Mr. Cahill. And then next steps, the first thing we have to do after this presentation is the board has to decide whether they're going to approve our goals. We have a meeting with our administrative team this summer. We do two-day orientation with them, so we'll be discussing these goals with them. We want to develop a timeline based on each individual goal, proceed with a plan, and then provide a monthly update to the board every month on how these goals are moving forward. And there's a little asterisk at the bottom, because as COVID has taught us, we've had to learn to pivot. When we have a plan, you have to also have a plan to amend the plan. So there's a statement at the bottom that reads, "Goals may be modified with board approval." So I asked the board for the approval of this, of our goals.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I just want to note, because I think it's important to thank Mrs. Rodriguez and the cabinet, and as she mentioned earlier in the evening, there were a couple of us that sat on like a task force to do this. So this that we have here, which this will be published after we have just voted on it, was hours of work and meetings. So I think we started, Mr. Beeler, back in when, I want to say, like, late winter. I mean, we started this fairly early on, so this has been a process for quite a while. So we appreciate all the work that the cabinet members have put in and the meetings that we've had with the board to discuss it. So thank you. We have an update now on Eye Opening Enterprises from Dr. Hassler.
Thank you. I last gave an update to the board at our Board of Ed meeting at the end of February, so I have a number of things to report back on. At that meeting, I spoke about some of the work that had been taken, that had taken place since the beginning of the school year. At that time, each of the school's implementation equity teams had met at least once. We had two district-wide equity team meetings to that point. Just a reminder to everybody who's watching, the implementation teams are teams that consist of staff and parent representatives from each of the individual schools, as well as student representatives at the secondary schools, the middle school and the high school. The district-wide team consists of representatives from each of the school teams, as well as parents and student representatives and district administrators from across the entire school district. Also, at that time, we had completed in the fall Module One training of the Trauma-Informed Culturally Responsive Connections in the Classroom training from Eye Opening Enterprises. That took place in the fall. Since that February meeting, the Monroe Woodbury instructional staff completed Module Two of the ticker, the Trauma-Informed Culturally Responsive Training. Modules Three and Four are scheduled to be completed during the 2021-2022 school year. The school implementation teams have also had monthly meetings since that time, and we've also had three additional meetings of the district-wide equity team meeting. The district-wide team's been working on the development of district equity policy, as well as a procedure for conducting equity audits within the school district. The school teams have been working on a variety of different projects. We asked them at a previous meeting to provide an update of their implementation team so that we could present it to the board, and the schools did such a phenomenal job, the video would have been over 45 minutes long. So out of, you know, respect for everybody, I don't know if you wanted to see the entire video, we decided that we were going to take some excerpts and sort of shrink it down. The full videos from each of the individual implementation teams are going to be posted on the school's individual website, so you are welcome to go back and to view them. And we're going to play a copy of the abbreviated version in a moment. However, moving into the 21-22 school year, Dr. Pickens from Eye Opening Enterprises is going to be conducting some professional development with the administrative team during our administrative retreat this summer. He'll also be back doing professional development with the staff next year in the form of Modules Three and Four. And he will also continue his work with both our district-wide equity team, as well as the individual building implementation teams. And with that, if you could roll the video, that would be great. Thank you.
This year, our class has been having a special time every morning called our share time, and I'll usually call on maybe one or two students to share something personal, something special.
We like to share stuff sometimes in the morning, because it helps us know a little bit more about each other in life.
You can share something that's on your heart this morning. This is a nice part of our day, because it helps our classroom community. It helps the students that are at home stay connected with the students that have returned to school.
What does that mean to fill somebody's bucket?
To pick them up and take them to the teacher if they get hurt.
Give them flowers if you want to.
Give them flowers, that's awesome.
One time I was courageous was when my mom passed out, and I called 911. And I talked to them, I told them where we were, and I did that only when I was six.
So what we've decided is at a building level, in every classroom, we've initiated these connection sessions with our students, where the students are able to generate questions that they can use, and they can learn a little bit more about each other and deepen their connections with each other and their teachers.
Hi, I'm Louis. I've been working since late spring with a group of my peers to create systemic social and racial change within Monroe Woodbury. We created a document that we presented to administration that highlighted the areas of the school and community that we felt could be improved in order to better represent all of those students.
Hello, my name's Gazia Tillman, and I'm in seventh grade. What I hope our team will accomplish is to make our curriculum more diverse, so that all students will have a love for learning like I do.
I'm Anthony Dufusto, and I teach seventh grade social studies at the middle school. What I'm hoping that our committee will accomplish will be to provide for our district ways in which we can teach a full, complex history in a way that all of our students will be able to flourish.
Once again, those are excerpts from each of the building's videos, and the full-length videos are going to appear on the individual websites of each of the schools. So if you're curious about the implementation work that's happening at each of the schools, you can check back on their individual websites to see their full individual videos.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions or comments? I just want to say thank you to all the teams. I know that there was a lot of work, as Dr. Hassler said, the video was quite lengthy, so they have shortened it, but I encourage everybody to please go and watch them, because I'm sure they're great. They have been doing a lot of hard work behind the scenes, so I appreciate the effort that was put in. Next, we have a resolution related to the 2021 internal audit. May I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Committee reports, I'll start with policy. Speaking of equity, the policy committee has been meeting, and we have, at this point, we had started working on some of our equity policies. We have been meeting with faculty, students, our attorneys have given some feedback, and at this present time, we're going to kind of pause for a little bit, because there is some information that's coming out directly from New York State Education Department. So prior to us putting everything in that we want, we're going to kind of wait to see what it is that we're required to do, and then we will get back together to meet to discuss how we can fine-tune some of that for Monroe Woodbury students. So that's kind of where we're at for policy. We have also, for every committee that we have, established our dates already for our next year's meetings. So at some point, Ms. Vitucci will be posting those as well, so please remember that those meetings are open to the public. If anybody should wish to attend, those have been established for next year. Dawn, anything for visitation?
We completed our visitations with all the schools and the buildings within the district recently, and we collaborated with the facilities committee, and I think that Dawn or Patrick will speak to that work that went into that.
Okay. Dawn, Sam, you'll have, do you want to speak to anything about audit? And then Patrick?
Yeah, so we had both audit and we had facilities. I'll let Patrick speak to it. There's several, I guess, major events in any way.
Okay.
Yeah, so the latest audit committee meeting, we reviewed the internal audit report that you just approved, and so that was both a risk assessment. So that's something we have to do every year, is part of the internal process, look at the entire organization and update the risk assessment, the internal controls of the organization. So we reviewed that report, which had just been done by the auditors, and we reviewed the report where they go a little deeper in a more specific area, which had to do with the use of district credit cards. And so there were really no major significant findings. There was a few things that they pointed out that we could do a little bit better, that we need to improve on. The next steps would be to put together a corrective action plan for that, that addresses that, will evaluate the credit cards, and in all likelihood, we'll have maybe fewer cards and some different controls on those. But that was it. We also had the auditor there, the external auditor from Newt and Hauser, at the audit committee meeting. The external audit will start on August 2nd, and there was, you know, one sort of minor change to accounting treatment. I won't even go into it and bore everybody with that, but that was essentially the meeting in the audit committee.
Yeah, for audit, I will say that Patrick's team is doing an outstanding job of, you know, rooting out everything, looking at process. We see a constant improvement in the oversight of everything. I mean, it was good to begin with, but there's clearly a constant effort to improve our process and make sure that everything's shipshape. And then facilities as well.
Yeah, so we had a facilities meeting Monday, right? Monday?
Yes.
I think this week. And we covered a lot of ground. I mean, we talked about goal number three for a while, a few other notable things. We went through the projects that Buildings and Grounds has undertaken in the last six months or nine months, what we're planning to do this summer. We talked about, there was recent legislation, which is sort of significant, lowering, we have to do lead testing every five years of potable water, every outlet in the district, and we're actually in the middle of that right now. And so the state passed legislation to lower the level from 15, I think it's parts per billion, to five. So that's pretty significant, because it was difficult to pass everything at 15. And so the game plan may have to be installation of lead filters on every fixture in the district. So we talked about that for a while. We talked about the Harriman Center. Later in the agenda, there's a renewed lease with the Village of Harriman. We talked about capital project planning, the long-term plan maybe for the Sapphire Dorm, right? We touched on that. I think that's, you know, that was pretty much it for facilities.
Yeah, the one positive about, I mean, the new lead requirements, I don't think there'll be a faucet that'll pass in any school, not just here. So the positive news, they've indicated that there is a fund to potentially pay for the cost of remediating. So, you know, that's a positive, but my view of it in general was, you're going to have to put a filter on everything. At that level, there's no school, no house, you know, unless it was built yesterday, would ever pass something like that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Student report by Emily.
So I think this is my last report as a student representative for the Board of Education, so I have two things to share with you tonight. The first one is an update regarding Essential Prep, which is the student-led SAT program that I founded. I will be passing that on to students to manage. This was something I was trying to find in a one-to-two-month span since Essential Prep ended, and I sent out a Google form for students to apply. In that Google form, the group of tutors decided on two students, Derek Lee and Stephanie Pang, and we interviewed them, and ultimately, Stephanie Pang will be taking the position of executive director, and she will be leading the program, and Derek will be assistant executive director. And they will be in charge of gathering the new group of students for Essential Prep to hopefully continue for the next year. So I wish them the best of luck in that. And next, I have an open letter to the board that the Social and Racial Justice Student Union wrote on May 5th, 2021, and they would like to share it with the Board of Education. So their letter. "The SRJSU, Social and Racial Justice Student Union, is a high school club that was developed by Monroe Woodbury High School students and staff members during the summer of 2020, a time when a violent act of racial injustice inspired citizens to demand change within their communities and from their leaders. Our club's mission is to increase positive representation of the BIPOC, Black, Indigenous, and People of Color population, in Monroe Woodbury High School. We also aim to promote social and racial justice and equity within the school. After hearing the comments made by board member, Mr. Don Beeler, on March 24th, 2021, our club had an emergency meeting to discuss how we can best support each other, be a voice for the voiceless, as well as how to address this." voice for the voiceless, as well as how to address his comments and how to continue to build allies within the school community. We find the rhetoric used by Mr. Beeler to be in direct opposition to our club's mission statement. His comments directly impacted and disturbed our club members, as well as members of the Monroe Woodbury community. We understand that the goals of the district are to create a socially and racially equitable school community. For this to be successful, we feel these goals should be supported and nurtured by all of our public representatives, especially by the members of the BOE. If we are to make progress towards these goals, there is no room for this type of biased discourse. As an extension of the Monroe Woodbury High School community, the SRJSU actively disavows all forms of bias, including xenophobia, and believes there is no place for it within the Monroe Woodbury community. We want to end by saying that we are grateful to have allies like Mrs. Lorraine Loane. We are hopeful knowing that there are individuals in our community who stand with us and support our mission to make Monroe Woodbury more socially and racially just. We anticipate that our Board of Education members will stand in solidarity with us, will represent and respect everyone from the community, and will be unified with the district's mission to create a socially and racially equitable school, school community." And they just wanted me to share that with you guys, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Emily. Personnel, Matt?
Thank you very much. I respectfully request approval for the items listed under personnel.
Motion?
Motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Business and financial, Patrick?
Yes, I would also respectfully request the approval of the items under business financial section. I, I'd just like to thank a community member for donation, to the middle school donation of a pearl percussion kit from Ms. Ingrid Pautzma, Pautzma, and an Artly clarinet to the Monroe Woodbury music program.
Thank you. A motion?
Motion.
Motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. May I have a motion to approve the recommendations of the Committee on Special Education, 17.1 to 17.4?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Reports by board and central office, Dr. Quaifman?
I'd like to express my excitement about the graduating class of 2021. It's great that we can actually have, not virtual, but a full graduation, and I would like to thank all the teachers, the cabinet, and this board for working relentlessly to make this happen, and I hope that more good things will come next year.
Thank you. Ms. Talbert?
This has been, the past couple of weeks have been really great, just getting back into, you know, Monroe Woodbury and everything that we do, and, and starting last week with the recognition of the top 25, that was awesome, and yesterday I attended the athletic college signing, and that was a beautiful event that Ms. Hawk and, and all the staff put on as well, and the senior picnic today, I know that there was a lot of, it seemed seamless, but I, I do appreciate all the work that was, was put out there from the senior class advisors and the custodial staff and everybody else and the administrative team that made that happen. Really looking forward to the prom and graduation and lots of great stuff for our students, and congratulations to all the students tonight and all the presentations. Appreciate everyone's time.
Thank you. Dawn?
Congratulations to all the award winners, and I am also glad that we can have a in-person graduation. It's nice to, in most places, be able to go maskless if you're, if you're vaccinated.
Suzanne?
Yeah, first, I'd like to, again, echo what Stacy said earlier, thank you so much to the high school for hosting us, and I'd like to congratulate all the recipients of the commendations and all our athletes on their achievements this year. I'd also like to thank the middle school for those lovely yearbooks, and I'd like to congratulate all the graduates, and I'm looking so forward to attending the in-person graduation, and I'd also like to wish Emily a special wish of good luck, and I'm going to miss you, and I hope everyone has a good summer.
Thank you very much. And this evening, Mr. Jamel Evans for the first time. Are, are you ready, Jamel, otherwise I can come back around?
Let's do it now.
Let's do it.
First, my first time, so it's an honor to be here, privilege. Also, I'd like to just point out that as I get more visibility into the different programs that are offered throughout the different schools in the district, I am flo- not floored, I, I am awed by the amount that Monroe Woodbury offers its students and the families compared to what it did, I guess, wow, I don't want to date myself, 20 years ago, 20 plus years ago. So I, I look forward to getting more ingrained into the school culture at all the different levels, all the different schools, and, and I'm, I'm, I was proud already, and I'm, I'm even more proud, you know, after seeing all the awards and all the incredible students that we have leaving, leaving the school. Megan, come on. I know her name like backwards and forwards now. So, you know, it's, it's an honor to, to be ingrained in the school district again.
Thank you so much and welcome. Emily, anything else?
I just want to say it's been an honor to be your Board of Education student representative. Thank you so much for giving me this opportunity, it really means a lot. It shaped a lot of my high school experience, and you've given me so much insight into a lot of things, and I'll never forget this position. I'm so happy I was able to inspire a lot of students to want to apply. I've had students come up to me personally, and I've noticed that students are a lot more active in watching the Board of Education and more active in vocalizing their student opinions, which is something that I feel like I've been working since middle school to help inspire, so I really appreciate you guys for helping me cultivate that. In addition, thank you so much to all the teachers who supported me. I know that my name was dropped a couple of times in like lessons and stuff like that, and I'm really grateful that they're, they were just, they had my back all the time, and they supported me in everything I did here, and thank you so much, and I'm going to remember this experience for the rest of my life and bring it into all my future endeavors, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Emily. Ms. Vitucci?
Well, I actually haven't spoken since the budget vote, so I just wanted to say thank you to the community for coming out to vote and passing our budget and our proposition for the buses, and to also congratulate our newly-elected and re-elected board members, Dawn, Sergey, Anthony, and J- welcome to Jamel. I look forward to working with all of you again, or newly, and I just wanted to congratulate all the seniors, I wish you all the best in your endeavors, and especially to Emily, it's been a pleasure getting to know you, and good luck at Carnegie Mellon, right?
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And have a wonderful summer, everyone.
Thank you. Dr. Vias?
Congratulations to all the, the recipients for tonight's award. Big shout out to our administrators, teachers, support staff, to helping our students to achieve the success in a difficult year that was the past year. Almost there, a few more days, and then we'll be successfully completing this year. There are a variety of different events around the district in the last few days. I attended a few Special Education Olympics, the weather was really holding up very nicely. Senior picnic was amazing today, so, so did the Sapphire first grade, amazing cha-cha dance by the kids.
Thank you. Dr. Hassler?
I, I want to echo that. We, we do this recognition every single year in June, and for me, particularly on, on this evening, a theme is what separates Monroe Woodbury from so many others and what makes the district so special. And I don't know if you heard in the presentations, some of the presenters talked about the various events that were canceled over the course of the school year, the regional Special Olympics competition, the state athletic competitions. However, the mission of our school district has been, how do we maintain as many programs as we possibly can, and, you know, maintain the experiences for our students during these challenging times. The Special, the Special Olympics competition is an example of that. While the regional competition was canceled, the team decided that they were going to get together and still plan a local competition at our high school field and bring the students in, give them an opportunity to compete, and still be recognized for their achievements. Tonight's recognition is really just a small example of many, many examples across the school district, and if you just look at our district website, you'll see examples ranging from the district art show to the musicals, rhythm and rhyme, and concerts, and so many things that are happening, and I, I could not be prouder of our students, our staff, and our school district that despite all of the challenges that this was certainly not a lost year, our kids did accomplish a lot, and I am so looking forward to the final recognition of the year next week in the form of graduation and honoring our seniors as they move on, so congratulations to everybody, thank you.
Thank you. Patrick?
Yeah, so I just want to also congratulate our seniors, right? It's a, it's a great milestone in life. I, I'd like to thank Emily for her service on the board, it was a, it was a pleasure serving with you, and, and that's it really. Have a good night, thanks.
Thank you. Matt?
All right, so a, a couple of mentions for some people who are, are moving on to a different phase. Last week, we, the, the board recognized through their vote, the, the retirements of two people in the high school main office, Kathy Lam and Christina Daly, so I just want to recognize them for all they did. That is a, not an easy job, there are a lot of kids here, there are a lot of moving parts, there's a, a great demand, but if anyone's interested in either one of those, if you could, you know, apply, that would be fantastic. Welcome to, to Jamel as well, congratulations, Emily, I'm sure you will do many, many great things and, and continue to make so many, so many people proud. And I, I want to echo what Eric said on a number of levels. First of all, this year was unlike any other, and there's so much recognition that goes to so many groups of people, from our teachers and our teaching assistants to our administrators who were constantly asked to do more. And then, you know, there are so many other people as well, right? There are our drivers and our food service helpers and our monitors and our custodial staff in Buildings and Grounds. So many people were just asked to do so much, and, and one of the things that continues to make this, and I think you kind of mentioned it, Jamel, it's impressive because what we do is we just do what we're supposed to do, and we do it with what we believe is best for kids, and that's really what I feel is one of the things that, that sets us apart. I love this time of the year because there are so many favorites, so every event is like my favorite, right? It starts with, you know, science research, and you're kind of like, oh my gosh, that's my favorite night, and then you have the awards night, you're, no my gosh, that's my favorite night, and then you go to the top 25 and you go to, and I agree with what, what Eric said, because next week is, that's the pinnacle, that is what, that's the best night of the year in, in graduation, and when you get to see the, the students, some of whom we've known since, gosh, they were, you know, some of them we knew when they were born, or e- even before, or they were, you know, we were principals and, and you saw the mom come and we said, oh yeah, look, this one, she's in pre-K, whoa, look out for her, because we all, we all got that, or look out for him, he's going to be the tough one, and to watch them all walk across the stage is just, it's emotional, but it's, it's incredible. So congratulations to all of them, have a wonderful summer, and, you know, just thank you for everything.
Thank you. Anthony?
Congratulations to all the award winners tonight. It's always a special night that we all look forward to, and after a special year like we've had, it's, it's good to have kind of a normal night again. It's just been a crazy year, and as everyone said, I, I echo how proud I am of the district and how everyone just really went above and beyond to try to make this year still a, a good, special year for the kids. Looking forward to the prom and the graduation, and finally put an end to this year, because I think we need a, a fresh start soon, so congratulations to everyone and have a great summer.
Thank you. Dan?
Well, they say when it rains, it pours, and it seemed like, you know, all of a sudden, events where we were actually able to get together just started coming out of the woodwork, and it was really nice to see, and, you know, it started off with Mr. Masano and his team having the drive-in National Junior Honor Society induction, which was, you know, the first time that I, I got to get back with people outside and together, which was really nice. And then it just snowballed from there with the foreign language honor society induction, high school awards night, and even last night, there was an outdoor concert for, you know, orchestra, wind ensemble, and voice ensemble, and, and it just was so much better, I mean, to, to get back with, you know, people and seeing faces you hadn't seen in ages. So, you know, I'm looking forward to graduation, I'm super thrilled that we're able to have everybody together, all the kids, their one last time as Monroe Woodbury students, and, you know, back to normal for next year. I'm keeping my fingers crossed that we keep moving in the right direction, and, you know, this becomes a faded memory by September, so, you know, I want to thank all the staff of Monroe Woodbury, have an awesome summer, relax, recharge, rejuvenate, and hopefully September's back on track.
Thank you. Elsie?
I want to begin by congratulating all of the award recipients, congratulating class of 2021, you are an amazing group of young people, get ready world, because this class is going to make changes, and I'm very, very proud of all of you. I want to go back to something that our first presenter said, and it was Randy Connolly, and she said, why Monroe Woodbury? And I think you've heard it, because of the people and the commitment of this district. And so I am so incredibly proud to say that I am part of this district with everyone who works alongside of us, and so a very big thank you, but I also want to thank our students because they have been instrumental in making things work. You have learned to pivot, I'm sure that many of you hate that word, and you probably want me to bury the word pivot, and I promise I won't be using it at graduation, but we have pivot, pivoted like no one else has had to, and you've done it with grace, and you've had a smile, and we've laughed through things, and so I am incredibly, incredibly proud of everyone that makes this district who we are. Lastly, I do have, I want to say, Emily, congratulations, and thank you for your service, because I think that's one of the most important things that we want to teach in this district, it's not just the academics, the music, the sports, the arts, it's about your service to your community, and so I thank you for being a part of this community, part of this board. And speaking of service, I have two awards that I have to give tonight. One is to Stacy McLeary, who was congratulated by NISBA for earning a Level 2 Board Excellence Award, which includes recognition on our board newspaper as well as a certificate of recognition, and you have 150, I think it's maybe hours? Who knows, but 150 points, and so I just want to say congratulations and thank you for your thing. I have a second award for Ms. Dawn Talbert, for, she is being recognized for earning Level 1, 1 Board Achievement, which includes a certificate of recognition, she has 75 hours of points, so congratulations to Dawn Talbert. With that, I just want to say a good night, it's been, it's been a good year, based on, you know, even everything that we've gone through, and I look forward to welcoming back probably about 900 students this summer, so it's not over, we're just taking a little hiatus and we'll be back in July for more students, so thank you.
Thank you. First, I'd like to say thank you for my award, I had no idea, although I, I think we would probably all argue that it's more than 150 hours, but it's truly not a complaint, I know that, you know, I don't want to speak for all of us, but I, I enjoy sitting in this seat, and tonight was one of the exact reasons why, I don't want to get emotional, I'm sorry, but it's like, I do this not just for my four students that sit in the Monroe Woodbury seats, but for all of these students that are here, and to Matt's point, every event that I go to, I say the same thing, it's the best event, because we get to see what it is that our kids get to experience, and I can't wait for Jamel to have the opportunity to see that as well, because we have some amazing students in this district, and from kindergarten all the way up to our seniors, I could not be more proud. I also want to say how proud I am of our administration, because this has been a year that literally felt like it hasn't ended. We kind of started last March 13th, I believe, and I don't think anybody had a normal summer, our, our administrators, our teachers, our staff, our students, I think it's been one large year of stress, so I echo what some of our other board members said, that I am hopeful that by September, we can be back to normal for our students and for everyone in the building. I know for the high school, thank you so much again for hosting us, because I know it's a lot of work, I'm sure they can't wait for us to be back at the Ed Center, where we don't have to be so spread out, but it has truly been a, a great year, and I just want to congratulate all of our students, I'm very much looking forward to next year, not just be, excuse me, next week, not just because I do have a senior this year, but to the point that even, not the seniors, but some of the kids that I've seen from Sapphire, and, you know, you see these students as they grow up, and it's just, it's just amazing, so I can't wait to be there, and I want to thank everybody for making it possible, because I truly do think that it's been a team effort, starting all the way up with Mrs. Rodriguez and the cabinet, so I, I am just very appreciative of that. And with that, I hope that everybody has a good summer, and we will see you again in July.
Motion?
So, may I have a motion to adjourn into executive session for So may I have a motion to adjourn into executive session for the purpose of consult with attorneys?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.